...are subject to reorder at the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Thank you.
I mean, we earned it.
Totally.
But you know.
I know. It's good to see you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Way better.
Yes. That's good.
But you know what? I'll have to go. I'll sit here and then I can go. Oh, I didn't push. I think I did. But maybe I didn't. When you don't respond, I said, ah. Don't do that. Hair's darker. Got what? Bang? Camera's sick. She and Scott Schmidt-Von, who she was sitting next to. They both have a stomach virus. They both have a stomach virus, which one of you was probably going to get next. Congratulations. What's that for? These are the people. Aw. When is it? Oh, yeah, they invited me. We in Jamaica? What? For Jamaica? We're going for Jim's little daughter's wedding. It's her first marriage. She's 35.
Pursuant to Section 841411 of Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, May 6, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Also, Vice President Dr. Holman will lead us in the OPS Vision Admission Statement.
First vision, every student, every day, prepare for success. And the mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college career and life.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Cassidy. Gauding.
Present.
Holman.
Here.
Cracky.
Here.
Perman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snipe.
Snow.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Board Member Cassidy and Snipe have informed us that they have prior engagements. I will entertain a motion to excuse both of them from tonight's meeting.
Some of.
Second.
This is motion of four by Dr. Holman, second by Mr. Smith. Roll call, please.
Cracky.
Hi.
Perman.
Here.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Gauding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Seven a.
Motion carries. Moving on to School Spotlight with Mrs. Monique Farmer.
Good evening, Board President Snow, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Logan. Tonight, the OPS Proud Spotlight is on Omaha North High School, Central High School, and Burke High Schools. More than 50 of our OPS students, some of who are here with us tonight, received a medal and academic honors at the Metro Conference Swim Meet in February. While we're unable to mention every student by name, we'd like to recognize the students who are here with us tonight, who either qualified, were nominated, or received a medal or academic honor at the conference. In additions to students who medaled, our OPS students also earned honors in the following academic categories. The Academic All-American Team Honor, the criteria is students with a cumulative GPA of at least 3.5. The Individual Academic All-American, the criteria for this award is that the student must be a varsity athlete with a cumulative GPA of 3.75. The All-State Academic Award, to qualify, the student must be a varsity athlete and have a cumulative GPA of 3.7. The National Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association All-American Honor, that honor is awarded to students who rank in the top 100 in their event nationally. And the Metro All-Academic Award qualification criteria requires that the athlete be a junior or senior, have an automatic state qualifying time, and have a GPA of 3.65. Additionally, we'd like to recognize Burke High School Senior Cody Hollinsworth, who placed first in the state in the 50-meter freestyle. We congratulate all OPS students for their accomplishments. Thank you to the principals who are here with us tonight, as well as our athletic directors and coaches. At this time, please join me in welcoming one of our OPS Burke High School students to the podium, Ms. Elizabeth Richardson. She will provide with some brief remarks.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth. I can really only attest to my experience at Burke, but I know that it's very similar to others', to North and Central's experiences. Burke swimming was slightly less than one-fourth of my life, yet it seems like yesterday that it had all began. It was four years with three different head coaches and a different group of girls every year. Even with the ever-changing atmosphere, Burke swimming had one of the biggest impacts on my teenage life. Not only did I have amazing, talented, and kind girls around me, but I had coaches and administration that helped me achieve my goals and become the person I am today. When you're around someone constantly for four months, they start to rub off on you. And there is no one better to be liked than Pat and Alex. These two men, who have only known me for three to two years, have seen me at my worst and best times, figuratively and literally, with swimming. Through the good and the bad, they've helped me grow personally and in the water. Now, swimming isn't a top priority sport, but Mr. Williams helped us feel that way by improving our facilities and providing new gear and equipment. These small things can make a big difference in athletes' high school experiences. Even though my Burke swimming career is over, this will not be the last time they see me. That's the best thing about Burke swimming. You never want to close the yearbook. Thank you.
Sorry. I'll open up for colleagues for questions. Mrs. Gauding.
Well, I just want to thank you all for being here this evening and for the dedication you put into swimming. I know for some of you, it's early mornings and late into the evening, so we thank you for the dedication you've given to each of your schools. I am also very excited that I visited with a couple of you, two or three ahead of time, and discovered that a few of you are going on to swim in college, so maybe, Elizabeth, you could elaborate on that, and then I know at least one other person is, and then someone else is thinking about it, but if you could elaborate on that for us.
My plan is to swim for Iowa State next year.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And I think Cody is still trying to decide, right? So Cody, stand up. I don't know that we've had a first-place finisher in the state in a while, so maybe share with us a little of your experience.
I'm looking into a couple of different colleges. I'm not quite sure where. That's pretty much where I'm at.
You know what? I'd love for you to share just a little bit. I think you've got a coach that retired this year, and I remember at State in your interview, you've talked a little bit about that and the motivation, and maybe just a little bit about coachhood and what he's done for the program at Burke.
Well, he's the reason that I was on that team. He was the one who gave me a spot on the team. And it was his last year for, he's been coaching there for 38 years, I think, which is a long time. So it was special to win him that last medal on his last year. And I was just really happy that I could do that, so.
Great. And thank you to all the rest of you as well for the dedication that you've had in swimming and for what that means to each of your schools and what that program means to you as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Gauding. So I had to ask you a question with Dr. Logan, but I know a lot of you guys came here, so if all the students, I know this is going to be kind of chaotic, if we're going to give everybody an opportunity to come up, say their name, their grade, and what event you swam in. So if you guys can just form a quick line, you guys are all high school students, you're pretty clever, and just line up, and then you'll come over here and form like in a pile, and then we'll take, you'll shake our hand, and then we'll take a group photo. So first thing, your name, your grade, and the event that you swam in, and then we'll gather in this group, shake hands with board members, get this limited edition OPS Proud pin. I'm telling you, it's priceless. And then we'll take a group photo, and then congratulate all our parents and families that came out to see you guys with this tremendous opportunity. So. Yes, ma'am.
Can I just add one thing to that? If you were able to swim on the second day, and if you placed, would you please tell us? I swam both days. So for people who don't know how the swimming works, in order to swim on the second day, you have to be in the top 16 in your event. Is that right? And so that's top 16 in the whole state, and it's a pretty big deal to make it to day two. You hear a lot of people talk about, did you make it to day two? So I think we should acknowledge every student who made it to day two.
All right. Starting with you two.
I'm Elizabeth Richardson. I'm a senior, and I swam the 100 back and 200 IM, and I got third in both of those events.
Congratulations.
I'm Cody Hollinsworth. I'm a senior. I swam the 50 free, 100 free. I got first in the 50, third in the 100.
I'm Quinn Williams. I swam the 50 freestyle, the 100 backstroke, the 200 freestyle relay, and the 400 freestyle relay. And are we talking about State or Metro? Sorry, I'm very confused.
State.
State? Okay, cool. I think I got 10th in both events, actually, so.
Congratulations.
My name is Aaron Ramsdale, and I swam the 200 free and the 200 medley relay and the 200 free relay. And then I made it back, but I didn't medal.
Still. Thank you. Congratulations.
Hi, my name's Dally Long, and I'm actually a diver, and I got fifth in State.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
What school did you go, what school do you go to?
I go to Central.
There we go. Eagles in the house.
Hi, I'm Abby Craig. I'm a senior. I swam the 200 free, the 100 free, and then both free relays, and then my 200 free relay got fifth. Does that get it?
What school you go to?
Central.
Central. There we go. You guys got to give some love to your principal, Ed Bennett, over there. He came to see you guys.
I'm Grace Weberg. I swim for Central, and I swam relays.
Congratulations.
I'm Emma Neeland. I swim for Central, and I swim relays, too.
Congratulations.
I'm Frances Curry. I'm a sophomore at Central, and I swim on the 200 medley relay.
I'm Millie Young. I am a freshman, and I did the 100 back and 100 free, I think, and a relay.
What school?
I'm Valeria Welk. I'm a freshman at Central. I swim the 50 free and relays.
My name's Jessica Jones. I'm a junior at Burke, and I swim the 200 and 500 free.
My name is Carly Kendy. I'm a freshman at Burke, and I swim the 50 free and 100 breast.
My name's Ella Frisbee. I'm a sophomore at Burke, and I swim the 100 free.
My name is Ally. I'm a freshman at Burke, and I swim the 100 fly, 200 IM, and 200 medley relay.
My name is Grace. I swim the 500 and the 200. Oh, and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Maris Grayble. I'm a freshman at Burke, and I swam the 100 back, 100 free, and 400 free relay.
My name is Ella Ibis, and I'm a freshman at Burke, and I swim the 100 and 200.
My name is Gabby Nielsen, and I swam the 100 breast and 200 IM or medley relay at Burke, and I think both got 12th at State.
My name is Caitlin Crockett. I'm a senior at Burke High School, and I was unfortunate to not be able to swim my senior year, but I stayed on as an assistant coach.
My name, oh, sorry. My name is Vian Kemper. I'm a sophomore at Omaha North, and I swam the two medley relay, four free relay, 100 fly, and I got 12th from the 200 IM.
I'm Lauren Sitzman. I'm a freshman at Omaha North, and I swam the 400 free relay.
I'm Mary Anna Wheeler. I'm a freshman at Burke, and I swim the 500.
I'm Carter Waltholz. I'm a senior at Burke, and I swim the three relays.
I'm Drake Nielsen. I'm a sophomore at Burke, and I swim the 200 IM, 100 breaststroke, and 400 free relay at State.
Congratulations. We would like to shake all your guys' hands and congratulate you for this amazing achievement and making us OPS proud, so thank you.
Elizabeth, we're going to have to stand. I'm going to put the tall kids in the back, shorter kids in the front. We're going to do a group photo. Don't take off yet. We're going to do a group photo.
So we would like everyone, all the students that swim, to come to this medal of this half-bowl here, and we want to take a photo with all you guys. All tall guys in the back with me. I'm pretty tall, so. We'll take a two-minute recess.
So for the record, Quinn's mom reminded him that he did not get 10th, he got eighth place, so we just want to, so just for the record.
All righty. Well, we're moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications. Dr. Logan.
Wow, the swimmers took a lot of the energy out the room. I'm kind of sad. Good evening, President Snow, members of the Board, and members of the public. Thank you for joining us this evening. Central High School last week celebrated a ribbon-cutting for a fantastic $19 million addition and renovation that was made possible through private philanthropic funding. The addition houses a new digital library, an arts and library addition, a digital library, a 300-seat black box theater, visual and performing arts spaces, instrumental and vocal music and drama classrooms. It is really fantastic. If you have an opportunity, please go by. A huge thank you to Central High alumni Michael Labens, class of 1970, and David Slossburg, class of 1970, for co-chairing the Capitol Campaign, which raised the funding that made the new addition possible. It's really fantastic. Coming up, starting tomorrow, we begin with our school boundary meetings. They start tomorrow and go through May 8. The district will hold open community meetings at each of our high schools to gather input from staff, families, and the community regarding proposed changes to South Omaha Elementary and Middle School attendance boundaries and our high school attendance boundaries, and looking forward to the opening of five new schools around the district. These updates are necessary to incorporate our five schools. More information can be found on the website, boundary OPS dot O R G, which was launched today. When you go onto the website, you can actually enter your address and then look at the different options that have been composed by the committee and see how each of them would impact your student or children. So we encourage communities to do that. If you go to our website, you can see the dates of all of our community meetings. We look forward to having you there. We are in the middle of looking at our, selecting our elementary language arts materials, the curriculum to be used in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten through fifth grade, and all of our classrooms, and we will be looking for, we will have opportunities for community review and input. The meeting will take place on Tuesday, May 7, from 4 to 7, and on Wednesday, May 8, from 8 a.m. to 11 a.m., to allow parents who work in the evening to come during the day. And we look forward to getting that feedback from our community members as we provide new materials to our young people. If I remember correctly, it's been about since 2004 since the last materials were purchased, and so we are really... and so we are really, and very excited that we will have these new materials for our young people. Congratulations to the Wilson Focus School Robotics Team. They qualified for the Open Robotics Championship, held on April 3rd and 4th, did very well. Tech Girls Arena, Abdussalem, Tierney Coughlin, and Melissa Rodriguez, and our GearBots, Orin Benson, Will Bryan, and Dustin Bratton. And to the middle, to the OPS middle and high school students who earned awards in the Metro Science and Engineering Fair, the overall top students will advance to compete at the state level. We have Abdul Nasser Sheikh from Central High School, and Samantha Wood from the UNMC Health Alliance. Samantha is a student at Burke High School. In our middle school, we have Sophia Acosta, Kiana Anding from McMillan Magnet, and then Charles McGovern and Cameron Rolfson from Buffett Magnet Middle School. Very excited about that. Congratulations to Northwest High Magnet teacher Rachel Arons, who is the Air Force Association's Teacher of the Year. This award recognizes STEM teachers who are shaping the future by introducing students to exciting new concepts and offering a glimpse of what's possible. Congratulations to you, Ms. Arons. Very, very proud of you. She is also one of this year's National Geographic and Lindblad Expeditions Grosvenor Teacher Fellows. She will travel to Galapagos for a 10-day voyage aboard the National Geographic Endeavor. Wow, that's awesome. Dang, wow. Yay, good for you, Ms. Arons. Everybody's jealous here at the board table. We're very excited for you, and you make us OPS proud. She has received many honors, so thank you to that, thank you to her. Also, to Omaha Public Schools students recognized as Nebraska World Language Distinguished Scholars, this is a big deal. This award recognizes students for their leadership in language learning, commitment to language study, appreciation for cultural diversity, and communicative competence. These students are mostly are fluent in the languages that they have learned. We have Nay May, who won this award in Chinese from Central High School, and Richards, Ricard's Ombrosco, for also Chinese at Burke High School. That is impressive. And honors, we have Samantha Aguilar in Chinese as well, from Burke High School, Teresa Nguyen in Chinese from Burke High School, Savannah Vasik, Spanish from Central High School, and Julia Wile, Spanish from Davis Middle School. So that is remarkable. We're really very excited about all of those awards for our young people. This concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Moving on to Board members. Mr. Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll talk later, I think, more about this when we get to our legislative matrix, but I just wanted to chime in a little bit on LB 289, and I'm only speaking for myself here. I would encourage all board members, because this is a, this is the tax bill that's going to be impacting OPS in one way or another as it moves forward in the legislature, and it's still early on, the board and the district, I don't think, is taking a position at this time, but again, we'll get into that later, but I just wanted to voice my opposition to property tax relief that comes at the heels of a sales tax increase, and I hope, I just want to make sure that everyone's staying on top of that. Although there's, property tax has always been kind of the third rail in Nebraska, solving that problem by increasing sales tax on the lowest, well, on everyone, but impacting disproportionately the lowest-income folks in Omaha and the rest of the state is probably the worst way to solve the problem, and I'll be strongly opposing it. There's enough people in the state living paycheck to paycheck, and, you know, reverting from a progressive tax to the most regressive tax is probably the most backwards idea that we could have, and so I'd hope the rest of my board colleagues would join me in just at least taking a strong look at that and seeing where the property tax relief is going to come from, because at the end of the day, it's our, as a board, who's going to decide whether or not we want to increase our levy significantly, and so we will be the taxing authority on that, as we are, and so I just want to make that clear as early on as I can, that I will strongly oppose any increase, at least as one board member can, to raising the sales tax and putting the burden on the lowest-income Nebraskans to give relief to folks who can afford homes, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. Moving on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is here before us. There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Crackey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holman. Any extensions? Roll call, please. Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Seven. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to legislative update, so, to your comment, Mr. Pearlman. Going to bring up John Lindsay. He'll give us a rundown that's happening in the legislature, as well as, the committee hasn't taken any new positions, but he will also highlight some of the new bills that are forming as we speak.
Thank you, Mr. Snow, members of the board. Not much action on other bills since I last reported to you, except the bill that Mr. Pearlman mentioned, which is, right now, LB 289 is just a shell bill. It doesn't do anything. It's introduced for the purpose of being the vehicle on the property tax relief package that the Revenue Committee is trying to put together. Couple of things, and I'll go through that, because it is significant, it seeks to reduce property tax or provide property tax relief through, through a change in school funding, and, so it has, will have a significant impact on OPS. I need to preface it by, it is a, it is a, still very much a working document, or very much a working issue, it really isn't a document. The bill has not been drafted yet, it is still going to be drafted. It was originally set for hearing on April 13th, excuse me, April 18th, which would be later this week, and when I say first set, it was last week that it was set, because these are the concepts that the Revenue Committee has come up with to try to address or provide property tax relief across the state. That hearing has been, was canceled and rescheduled for the 23rd, which would be next week, so that's sometime before the 23rd we'll actually see language. We haven't been able to see models, complete models, that show what the net impact is on OPS, and when those models are available, we'll certainly get them to you. They aren't available now, partly because the language isn't available yet. But the concepts that have been discussed within the committee, and I repeat, are subject to change, are as follows. The primary, or the biggest change, is that foundation aid would be provided to students across the state, or to school districts across the state, based on the number of students enrolled in their districts. There are a little over 300,000 students across the state, so the amount of dollars that would be available would be divided by that 300,000-plus, to arrive at a per-student number, and then multiplied by the number of students in each district, and that would be the first thing that would be paid to the state. That would be equal to 25% of the sales tax and 25% of the income tax that the state receives each year. That would go into a fund that would be dispersed for that foundation aid. That portion of it is a wash to OPS, because it's counted as a resource in the formula, so it means that every school district would receive that, OPS would receive it, but again, counted as in the formula, so it wouldn't change our TOSA aid at all, it wouldn't be new money. The, across the state, for districts that are non-equalized, meaning they don't get equalization aid, it would be new money for them, thus resulting in property tax in those 200-and-some districts that are not equalized. The maximum levy, and this would impact OPS, would drop from $1.05 to 95 cents. The local effort rate, which is the factor within the formula that provides the assumption for how much in the way of property tax dollars will be counted in determining equalization aid, that will drop to 90 cents. The net effect of that local effort rate change will be to increase the TOSA that OPS gets. The goal being to, as you drop that maximum levy, to backfill that with TOSA, so there would be a substantial increase in TOSA aid. It would also change the, reduce agland values to 65% of market, and commercial and residential to 90% of market. So again, that would be another 10% reduction in property tax resources that are available to the district. The, the valuation for both assumed within the, within the formula, and the valuation in needs, or the growth, excuse me, in both of those, would be capped at the CPI, at the Consumer Price Index, and that would be capped at 2.5%, plus construction expenditures. Net effect of that, you can probably do the math in your head, that if we're growing at 500 kids, 500 students a year, roughly 1%, that student enrollment growth is going to eat up 1% each year, so the CPI, again, will be working against the CPI. And then significantly, it would eliminate the averaging adjustment. The averaging adjustment came about in response partially to litigation OPS was involved in back in 10, 12 years ago. Part of the resolution, or OPS dismissed that litigation on the passage of a couple of items. One is the common levy, which has since been repealed, and on the passage of the averaging adjustment, which is proposed to be repealed. The, additionally, there would be a, of that 10-cent drop from $1.05 to 95, OPS would be allowed to assess six cents of that, of that reduction. Six cents of the 10 cents could, could be taken back by OPS and applied to the, to its ARC. The, the net of that is about $12 million on that assessed ARC. We can't really run numbers yet, we believe, again, without modeling, we believe OPS TOSA aid will increase by about $26 million under the proposal, but if we're reading this correctly, our, our property tax revenue loss could be as high as $41 billion, and so even the assessment for the ARC could leave us at a, at a net loss position. Not, this is primarily for information for you and to be able to answer questions. I think it's preliminary, or it's too, it's premature, to ask the board to take a position on a, on a bill that frankly hasn't been written yet, and I think we do have to see language before, I think the board would be in a position to take that. I should mention that there's, there's a lot of moving parts to the bill. It will also increase some sales tax, as Mr. Pearlman mentioned, the general sales packs, plus repeal of several sales tax exemption, would increase the tobacco tax by 40 cents, would add $2.25, I believe, to the documentary stamp tax, which means if you sell your house, you would be assessed $2.25 per thousand dollars of value additional on that sale. Has some, and the talks continue on how the, what it will finally look like, and that's what we're interested in, is what it will finally look like. And again, when that language is available, we will send it out to everyone. With that, Mr. Snow, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. And real quick, before we pass it on to anybody that has questions, you're assuming language probably by Friday?
It's set for hearing, so the language should be available before the hearing, which is next Tuesday, the last business day for the legislature. They are in recess on Friday and Monday, so that last business day would be Thursday.
Okay.
That's what we're hoping will be available.
Thank you. I'll open up for any questions, Dr. Holman, and then Ms. Crackey.
Thank you for the information, John. I do have several questions, and hopefully you might be able to provide some insight in, on the questions that I have, and I know some of them you may have briefly commented on, but I may ask for further detail. My first question is, can you tell us how much property tax revenue is generated from commercial, residential, and then agricultural land?
I don't have that number. I think overall, it's about 227 million.
I have it, I have it for you.
It's, we have, our property tax breakdown from last year is 63.2% is residential, 29.5% is commercial industrial, we have .2% is agland, and 7.1% is all other, including personal property, centrally assessed agricultural buildings and farmsteads, and that.
Thank you. Do you know what the impact will be to the district if the valuation for residential is moved from 90%, from 100, and then to 65% for agricultural land from the 75?
It would be 10%, on the residential side, 63% of our revenue, property tax revenue, using the figures that Dr. Logan just used, would be residential, so 63% of the 227 million, which I believe what the number is.
We took a look at that earlier today, and the agriculture has very little impact, because it's .2% of the total. The estimate on the residential was around $14 million.
14?
Yes.
Thank you. And you did talk a little bit about the history of the averaging adjustment, but can you tell us a little bit about what was it designed to do initially?
Going way back, drawing on this old brain of mine. Back in the early 2000s, OPS was simply at its end, couldn't fund the district, had limitations on our spending authority, limitations on our taxing authority, didn't have the funds to do what it needed. Out of desperation, the board then chose to, to engage in litigation with the state, along with three other school districts, all high-poverty, high ELL, all minority districts, over, to litigate over adequacy and equity of funding. That litigation went on for several years. As it progressed, the legislature was looking at trying to address some of the issues that were brought up. The, one city, one school district, came up in the middle of that, and kind of expanded the conversation. The learning community was, was created along the same time there was a proposal to divide OPS into three separate racially identifiable districts. That didn't go over well nationally or internationally. It was revisited the following year. The following year, as part of that, the common levy came about, as did the averaging adjustment, both intending to try to address the inequity in funding of OPS. As I mentioned, common levy went away, was repealed two or three years ago. The averaging adjustment has been adjusted over the years, but what it does, and why it came about, was because of that low level of spending in a high-needs district like OPS. It provided that the statewide average of school district spending per pupil, that in a district like, like OPS, the difference between the statewide average and our per-pupil spending, 90% of that, would be paid as additional aid to the district. I believe in the first year, it generated, that averaging adjustment generated an additional $24 million, which should give you some indication of how underfunded OPS was at the time. In response to that, by the way, in response to the passage of the averaging adjustment and common levy, OPS dismissed their litigation. So bottom line is, what it does, tends to, it tends to provide additional resources to low-spending, high-needs districts by bringing them closer to the state average.
Sorry, I have so many questions.
It's alright, it's alright. It's all right.
Can you comment on the historical stability of relying on property tax versus TOSA for our revenue?
Yeah, property tax is just much more stable. It provides, it's predictable. Courtney's doing a budget, she knows how much property tax is going to be, and it's going to vary, but not by wide swings. TOSA, on the other hand, is going to vary, and it's not as predictable. Right now, she has no clue what TOSA will be because they delayed the certification again this year, and it won't be certified until June. So you have the instability of the TOSA, and 26, I believe, out of the last 29 years, they've changed the formula, which again, gets away from predictability, whereas property tax, you just know you can rely on it. So that's the stability. In the past, OPS, if I get these numbers correct, 55% reliant on property tax, 45% reliant on property tax, and then the common levy went away, we became, I believe, 44% reliant on property tax and 56% reliant on property tax. With a change like this, we would drop into the 30s percent of reliant on property tax.
And my last question, you did kind of speak on this a little bit, but just for some clarification. What impact do you think that this will have on budgetary growth, especially given how quickly we are adding new students?
Yeah, it would, it would limit growth. Assuming we continue to grow at roughly 1% a year, we would have a declining ability to spend, or to, we would fall behind the Consumer Price Index. As our costs go up, health insurance, employee salaries, and transportation, everything that this board has to deal with, as those go up, and you assume it's going to be by the inflation factor, we will be probably 1% behind because our student growth will be eating up part of that within our spending growth.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Crackey.
I have a question about the reaction of them to the flood issue. How are they taking care of that?
That is, I know it's concerning the appropriations chair, about where the money will come from. I don't think they have a full grasp yet of what the costs will be. They will be enormous. There's a lot of roads.
I think that is going to influence everything else that's going on.
Yeah, it's going to have an impact on the budget. To what extent, I don't have a clue.
And it really needs to, when you read it, see it, you know, feel it, it's pretty simple. Thank you.
Mr.? Oh, Mrs. Gotti.
I have a question, well, I have a couple of questions related to the whole property tax piece. So I assume that that would be for the 2021 year? Is that what we're talking about here? Is that?
Yes.
And would?
Again, I believe it's the 2021.
Well, we think, right, because it hasn't been written.
I have not seen.
You're right, you're right. Okay. So I'm under the assumption that the county assessors would just go in and reduce, is that what they're going to do, is just reduce valuations by 10% if this were to pass?
Again, there's, there's a.
But they've also got to be adjusting those valuations as they're going through the process.
I think they do, I think the way they do it with respect to agricultural land is they establish a market value, and then you're assigned 75% of that. I assume the same type of a process would take place on this.
So it could be a real, I would see it as a challenge in Douglas County, just because of some of the challenges of getting neighborhoods up, getting neighborhoods correct, but then not always being, adjusting everybody at the same time, right? So I can see challenges ahead for that. One of my questions, I guess I have the question around the rural side, because we're obviously at the $1.5, but many rural districts are not. So is the anticipation that rural districts would be able to lower their levy with the additional aid, which they lost when they were at one-time equalized and now are not equalized? Is that kind of the assumption around this, that that's where the property tax relief will come about?
Yes. The foundation aid that would be paid, if you look at it, if they're at a 60 cent levy right now, and they're able to pay for their budget at 60 cents, and then they get an additional roughly $3,500 per student in, then that adds to what their revenue is available so they can lower their property tax rate to get to the same number of dollars. So yes, it would.
It really depends on every board out there.
Yes.
Outside of those of us who are at the $1.5, are going to have to make that separate vote at the board table on what their levy is, which I'm sure most of them do anyway every year as they analyze.
Well, their spending growth would be limited, so they couldn't make the choice to.
To continue.
More than the Consumer Price Index.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Perlman?
I haven't had a chance to take a close look to see what CPI they're using. Do you know what CPI they're using? It's gotten pretty political lately.
I don't. Again, we haven't seen language. We've just seen, in a summary document that I just saw, it just referenced CPI.
Okay. And I do have a question about another bill.
Go ahead.
I think it's LR14CA. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Can you tell us how that, what that's about and how that is going to impact OPS?
I apologize, I have to find it in my notes here.
This is the, if I'm correct, this is the amendment to allow property taxes to expand for up to 20 years.
Amendment to do?
It's a TIF expansion for extremely banded areas.
Oh, that is advanced. It is at select file.
That's in final reading today.
I know they debated. You can very well be right. I know it had debate. It got stopped on general file. Senator Wayne continued to work it and was able to get it advanced. So whether that was to final read or select file, I'm not sure, but I know it did advance.
It says it on the website, final read.
And it's pretty, it sailed through, right? It's unanimous votes every time, right?
The first time, it was filibustered and it came off the agenda due to the time on it, but then it had a strong, strong vote after that.
And so in 2018, Omaha had $1.65 billion in property subject to TIF. And so presumably, that has a significant impact on the revenue that's being brought into the school district. Is that right?
I believe just under 10% of OPS valuation is subject to TIF.
Okay.
Or just under 10% of OPS property, real estate is subject to TIF. It is counted, for purposes of TOSA, it is counted at the value that it's being carried on the tax rolls, as opposed to the market value. Of course, the difference between where it's carried on the tax roll and the market value is what's used for the TIF proceeds. It's carried at that lower value, or we are assessed that lower value as presuming what we are getting out of it. So it's actually, the reality is that for school aid purposes, the state actually funds that difference in TIF.
But it's locked in for those 15 to 20 years.
For those 15 or possibly 20.
But if this passed, it'd be 20.
Right. Yeah, there's no growth that's occurring during that time.
So who's bearing the brunt of the TIF then, if it's not, at least at 10% for the school districts, if it's being reimbursed at the state level?
Well, think through the TOSA formula. If we are, if you have a million-dollar property and it's developed and now it's worth 10 million, the 1 million is what is carried, or is what is taken as part of our resources. The difference between that, the $9 million or whatever it is, whatever the tax on that value is, is what goes to the TIF project. So cities, of course, they're the ones who vote on it, would lose that, that growth. Counties, any taxing authority would lose that. OPS would lose that taxing authority as well, but it would be replaced with TOSA because without the growth, I mean, obviously, we're going to have natural growth in values over the years, and we would not have that for that 15-year period that TIF is locked in.
So is that something that the district or our board is going to be taking a position on?
I believe.
So we did have a legislative call that you weren't able to make that call, that we did discuss of taking a position on TIF, not this particular bill, just because of it's the 11th hour, but the question was taking a broader position on TIF in general moving forward? If that doesn't answer your question on, if we're taking a position on this actual amendment?
Right. I feel like if any action in the legislature is going to have a significant fiscal impact on our district, we should have a position on it.
And that was, the committee did decide to develop a, whatever we call those.
Position statement.
Position policy statements to provide to the board as a general policy on TIF, as opposed to.
This particular.
A particular bill. And that was at that legislative committee call, determined that we would do that, present it before the next legislative session for the board to take a position on.
Mrs. Gotti.
I think it's also important, I guess, and I missed the last call, but it's also important to note that it doesn't impact just the general levy portion, it also impacts whatever your bond levy is as well.
Yes.
So when we're collecting whatever, the 6 cents or the 8 cents on the 2018, we're not collecting, we're collecting on that pre-developed number versus the number after the development happens, which I discovered a few years ago and was unaware that it wasn't just a general levy impact. So it does have, it does have financial impact to the district, especially when you're paying off your bonds and you'd like to see that, but that's the way it works.
Is there a possibility, I mean, this be directed towards Dr. Logan and staff, for the district to study, I wouldn't say study, but to find out that actual impact of TIF, as well as, assuming if this passed, so the entire board and the district understands, the administration knows, what that real dollar amount is that we're missing out over that 15 to 20 years, if it's 11, 13 million? Dr. Logan?
We certainly can, and have that ready for your legislative call on Friday, if you want to consider this on Friday on your legislative call. I certainly can get that information for you.
That'd be helpful.
Will do.
And even if the committee, the board doesn't take a position on it, it's something as we move forward, when someone in the community wants to know our position on TIF, whatever position we take, we can explain what that actual dollar amount there. Does that make sense to everybody? Does that help with your, so?
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like, I mean, this is going to impact us. I mean, how often does a state take up expansion of TIF? And here we are, I mean, now we're at the 11th hour, it's in final reading, every vote I see is 43-0, and it's going to impact the amount of money that we can use to fund our schools and, you know.
I think the argument on the floor, if I'm correct, was positioned in a different way, and it was positioned to underdeveloped communities, particularly in North and South Omaha, and I think that's how it was positioned to the legislature, and that's how that support came across the board, even with that amendment in there by Grony.
And I understand that, and it's more nuanced than.
Yeah.
You know, we're not calling fair acres blighted. That's not what Senator Wayne's bill is. I get that. But another corporate handout for folks to build some apartments, no matter where they are, you know, at the expense of students and OPS? Is that what we want to just stay on silent on? No?
I'm 100% with you on that. I mean, my particular position, I will go the way the committee or the board wants to actually take a broader position on TIF, because I think the way our legislature is moving, this conversation will eventually come up again on TIF to bring businesses in. And I think we do have that strong stance and let the community know, and not just the community, but the legislature know that we're not taking a position just for this bill, but we're taking a position in TIF in general, tax payment, all that stuff, which is a little bit separate action. So stay tuned for that legislative call.
So it sounds like we're going to have the legislative call on Friday, and then we'll be prepared at the next.
Board meeting on the 3rd. Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Lindsay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I stand corrected, the next board meeting is actually May 6th, not the 3rd. Moving on the agenda to strategic planning, we have been, we've been blessed with Dr. Logan to present kind of high level of where her vision is on our strategic timeline and kind of what she hopes to get out of the strategic plan, not just with the board, but as a district as a whole.
Yeah, I'm not going to move.
Dr. Logan?
Yep. Good evening again. The, I'm going to present really high level on the timeline for the next iteration of the strategic plan. That is the Benson, the new Benson West, Benson.
Benson High School.
Benson High School. That is their new mural that's going to be dedicated on May 3rd, and it's really a beautiful addition to their high school. And wanted to use that as a backdrop because as I look at our student and our student, our wonderful student body, really representing what our students, the world that our students will not only live in, but also work in, and that we're preparing them for post-secondary. So again, Omaha Public Schools preparing students for the real world ahead. So I'm going today to give a high-level overview of process, some of the goals for planning, and a timeline of the strategic plan process. As many of you are aware, we have our current strategic plan. We had an update on the scorecard in February, thanks to our research division, and it is time for us to look at where we are. There are many factors that have changed, especially our financial position, and how we have to really look at our financial, strategic financial plan as much as anything if we're going to be able to deliver on the promise that we make to our families of our 53,000 students. And so at this current stage, we are now in research and budget review, and we have three individuals that we're working with. It's an eclectic bunch of individuals. Rebecca Ryan, who is a futurist who has worked in Omaha before, she does, she's an economist that focuses on helping organizations look at where they are now, but really prepare for the future, considering factors that they may not necessarily always consider. Then we will move on into, in the summer, stakeholder engagement, and that will extend to late summer, because we realize in July that we're mostly focused on vacation, which is what we should be doing in July, and June as well. And so you will see a lot of that engagement in August, late August, and September, in terms of making sure that all stakeholder groups, especially the Board of Education, is really driving the plan, and that it's a vision that the board holds along with school, with administration. And then. And then, development and data connections in the fall of 2019, so at that point, there would be a plan for the board to react to, and to consider, and to see whether or not this is the direction. And in the late winter, and I'm sorry, in the early winter, actually, really late fall, the solidification of the strategic plan, and then finally, the launch in January of 2020. This gives us about six months in between the end of the current plan, and not even, not quite six months, but about four months between the end of the current plan and the launch of the next plan to be prepared and to do something that is significant and that makes sense for everybody. So we have, there are four planning goals, and these are not necessarily unusual, you will typically see these in all strategic plans, but what really, I think is really important is the engagement of stakeholders and the evaluation of our budget and the establishment of strategic plan goals. In the next slide, you'll see some kind of proposed goals, and they were really, they're really placeholders for folks to consider as we start the process. But we really want to, going back to goal one, look at the research-based and evidence-based practices that support the assessment of the district's budget and the way that we are currently looking at our academic planning for our students. One of the really wonderful things about this plan is that, under the direction of our chief academic officer, the folks in our high school, in our secondary division, are working on the portrait of a OPS grad. So what do we want our students to know and be able to do at the, when they leave us from high school? What do students say when they graduate? What do they get? And that seems like a very, you know, simple question, and you want every student, when they leave us, to be ready to meet the, whatever the expectation, if it's going in the military, to be prepared to enter the military, if that's what they want to do. That means they take, if they take ASVAB, and then they are, they qualify to go into the military. If they want to go to a, a top-tier college, that they've gotten the academic preparation that they want, that they need, and the grades, the SAT or ACT scores, so that they can get into that top-tier college. If they want to be a plumber, and they have enrolled in one of our programs, that they have had an opportunity for pre-apprenticeship, and are prepared to leave us and to transition to their next step, and everything in between. And so, again, you see the timeline, this is our tentative, well, it's not really tentative, we've started to work on these things. The consultants, the other two consultants are Keisha Ray, Dr. Keisha Ray, who is a person who worked on reconstructing a plan for one of our states in the southeastern part of the country, in Tennessee, actually, to reconstruct that, this, not only the school district, but also the planning for the school district, which was in state receivership, and then now is a growing school district in the fastest-growing city in the country, and that's Nashville. And then, our third individual is a financial expert, a person who, his name is Dr. David Trautenberg, who worked with, in, in New Orleans, in putting what I'd like to say, Humpty Dumpty back together again. You may know that they charterized that entire district, and that they decided that that was not a good idea, that they needed to put all of those schools back into one school district, and so he is working on that effort to create budgets from 70 individual institutions back into one, into one budget and one school district. And so you can see our timeline there. Really, the goal is between October and December, and then throughout this process, we are proposing a board workshop in May to, I'm sorry, in June, to work with our consultants so that the board, it is really, the board really drives the planning. And so if we look at our model for success, the most important thing that we have for this strategic plan, and was, didn't, we didn't have to do this for the last version, was we have to spend a lot of time on our financial accountability and sustainability. How are we spending our money? Looking at all of our programmatic expenses, are we getting bang for our buck on that, on the, what we're spending our money for, on? How much some programs cost, and really evaluating those really difficult work, because everybody who has a program loves their program, and then, of course, we want to see whether or not we're getting, if our students are getting their money's worth, and our parents and taxpayers. And then, that builds up to, obviously, having a highly qualified and effective staff, and one of the things we're saying in every division, of course, our teachers are right at the forefront, but we have to have excellent staff and maintenance, we have excellent, we need to have excellent staff in human resources, we need to have excellent bus drivers, we need to have excellent folks in nutrition services, excellent paraprofessionals, there's not anyone that we would leave behind, and then, obviously, all of our students prepared for post-secondary expectations. And so, we have some proposed goals here that you can look at, oh, that's fancy, that could be something to consider, and these are, like I said, proposed. I was a little hesitant to put these down, because I don't want you to think that I've been, but I needed to, we need to start somewhere, and so our, the folks that we're working with said, well, what are the things that you're thinking about now, probably need to be goals? And the financial sustainability keeps coming up, and especially during the next five years, knowing what we're facing, and obviously, having highly qualified staff. And next to each of those are some of the more granular kinds of things, when you think about a big goal, oh, what does that mean every day? So, for example, in goal two, what does a highly qualified and effective staff in every division mean? Well, it means growing your own, and like, for example, with teachers, it's not waiting until they get to college, it's starting in 10th grade, it's expanding our educators' rising opportunities in our high schools, to make sure all seven of our high schools, and that we have a goal of, if we have, if we have a goal of 1,000 students being involved in that, that we're working towards that. And then, how do we stay connected to those young people as they leave us and go to college? And then, once they go to college, staying connected with them as they go through their academic preparation to become teachers, and so on and so forth. Recruitment, obviously, developing our folks, and then advancement and growth. If you're going to keep the best people in your district, they want to be able to see themselves perhaps doing something else, if they aspire to do that, or whatever they're doing to be able to do it even better by opportunities to grow themselves professionally. And then last, and I should have, I didn't start with them first, but they're always the most important, are students ready to meet those post-secondary expectations? Do they have access to the right kind of technology? Do they, is their climate conducive to learning? Do they have all of the instructional resources that they need? Do they have opportunities for career readiness and college preparation that is really rigorous, so that when they go to college, when we say meet post-secondary expectations, that's not go and take a remedial course, that's go and take a four-credit course that they are 100% prepared to do on day one when they enter college. And that concludes my presentation now. Happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. We'll wait till you get to the, did you?
Table.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that I always appreciate your presentations, because they're clear, and we can all hear them, and that's important.
That's very important.
And our audience at home can always turn up their sound, but in the boardroom here, if somebody is mumbling, we cannot turn up our sound. So that's just a courtesy, I think, for everyone to speak a little louder. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gotti.
Every board member's on notice now, speak into the mic. Brooke, before I open up for questions, what is your vision for the strategic plan? How long are you expecting this plan to be out?
Well, I think you would, it makes sense to think about, we always, we typically think about a budget in a five-year cycle, and we also can see our birth rates five years out, so we know who's going to be entering our system, so that kind of the two of those kind of coming together and understanding how we're planning for the next five years, I think is that, it makes, it makes sense to, to know that. So if you have a declining birth rate, you know, well, I'm probably not going to need anymore, I'm not going to need space, so that's not something that I, or I need to contract in terms of space. And so I think that that kind of makes the most sense to go with five, with five years.
Thank you. That leads into my next question. Typically, I mean, some of us have done strategic plans before, and this is more just thinking ahead, once a strategic plan is done, of that accountability measure, how do we hold you and that strategic plan accountable? How do we hold ourselves accountable? If you can elaborate on that, I appreciate it.
Well, one of the suggestions that one of the folks had, who's going to be working with us, is that we, although we're doing a five-year plan, that we have a yearly opportunity for accountability, and so we create some key performance indicators, and that they be very simple, very simplistic ways to look at the, the big rock items. You know, the Board, Board of Education is very busy, doing all kinds of things, and has multiple things, you know, to, other priorities as well, but something that is very simplistic, but allows us to see, and then if we need to recalibrate and change some things, that we do that, that we don't write it once and then say, okay, well, here it is for five years, and, I mean, we could have, you know, a spaceship land, you know, with, and I'm saying that tongue-in-cheek, but something could happen that we don't, or some sort of black swan event that we aren't planning for, but is really going to impact how we have to do operations in our school district. And so, if you create a financial sustainability plan, and you have four schools taken out by a tornado, then you got an issue, and you've got to go in and do that, so, and think about, God forbid, that happened, but, you know, I think that that's kind of the way that, that we're looking at, and I think it increases, it makes it more viable to folks who are in the field. And for me, that's really very important, that we have very, we go with very few goals, that we can all kind of say what those goals are, and that we also think about what are our organizational values as we create this plan. You know, I wrote up there, "preparing students for the real world," because we're a diverse school, school district, and the world is becoming more and more diverse, and how do we, how do we celebrate and embrace that, because it makes us awesome, and make that a part of our, make that a part of our, of our plan. If you're a student here, there, you have worked with students of every background and every religion, and, you know, every kind of family, family configuration, and that's something that's going to serve you well as you transition to your post-secondary, to your, whatever your post-secondary world turns into. It's something that cannot be discounted, and I know that I've heard, talked to a couple graduates, one of them is Alec Rome, Alec Rome is my, is my, my buddy at University of Nebraska-Lincoln, and he has shared that with me, the important, how that, the importance of that.
Thank you. It was very helpful, having that accountability measure, where we all share it across, whether it's just, not just you, or one staff person in the office, or the principal, the board, everyone in general, has some form of accountability to make sure, and being able to be flexible, which is, is needed, if you've seen previous strategic plans in your life. Any questions from members of the board?
Mrs. Gotti?
I just have one, so that we can clarify for the public. I think that the cost is being funded, is that correct? And so, can you just maybe elaborate on that a little bit, just so that the public knows?
Thank you, Ms. Gotti. Yes, we did get some generous support from one of our funders to cover the cost, the entire cost of the strategic planning, so we won't be incurring any cost as a, as a school district.
Any other questions? I have one other, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, I may, I do believe, and I hope it's public, that we will have a staff person that will be designated to work on the strategic plan in the district. Mr. Ray? I just want everyone to know, if you have any questions or concerns, our chief of staff, Mr. Ray, who will be in charge of that as well.
Yes, Mr. Ray was selected for several reasons, but one of the most important is that as the board secretary, he works directly with the Board of Education, and if this is going to be a real collaboration between the administration and the Board of Education, it makes sense for him to be the liaison, and also to, because of his extensive background in the district, to work with the entire team, it's a whole, it's a team effort to push the work, to move the work forward.
Thank you. He doesn't seem like he likes compliments, it's not used to him as much. You're amazing at what you do, thank you.
Thank, thank you.
To our audit update, and before you start presenting, Courtney, if we could, if you can kind of, oh, you go ahead, still go, I'm, I'm just saying, if you could explain, I did have some questions from some board members that weren't on the board at the time, if you can kind of give like a 30-second of where we're at and how we got to this.
Yeah, yeah.
I will absolutely do that.
President Snow, Superintendent Dr. Logan, members of the board, thank you. As part of the district annual audit for the year 2017-18, that was presented to the board in December of 2018, Simon Johnson, our external audit firm, identified three control deficiencies as part of the entire audit work stream. Tonight, I'd like to update you on the corrective action plans that we have in place for each Simon Johnson identified one material weakness. So, a material weakness in audit language is a weakness where there is a reasonable possibility for a material financial statement misstatement. For the district, the weakness that was identified related to the calculation of accrued sick leave, and we'll go through that one in detail. The audit also identified one significant deficiency, so a significant deficiency is less severe than a material weakness, it is, but it still warrants attention. This deficiency that was identified was related to our ability to provide timely and accurate financial statements for audit. And the third control item that was identified, the last deficiency, is neither a significant deficiency or a material weakness, it is related to the number of processes and the manual nature of the processes associated with capital asset accounting within the For each of the deficiencies, the accounting and finance team has developed a corrective action plan, and we've been working those corrective action plans since the audit readout in December. For the material weakness, for accrued compensated absences, several things have been completed, and there are still a few things that are in process. So, items that have been completed are that we have adjusted the timeline for that activity so that we allow more time for review, we're starting earlier on that activity, we've established who the primary points of contact are going to be for that activity, and we have also centralized the review and the data calculation of that activity. In addition, the benefits team has provided training on the actual calculation with the finance and accounting team, we have some new people involved in that activity, and we've completed training on that. And right now, the finance and accounting team is documenting the process and designing the procedures that will allow us to undertake that activity as we get into the end of the year when we do that. We are actually going to, in May, we are going to do a live scenario training with real data before we get to the end of the year. We will go through all of the procedures as we have documented and outlined them. Simon Johnson will actually do a complete review of the output of that, and we will see if there's anything that pops out of that that requires further attention, so that we can make any updates needed to the processes, we can retest if we need to before the end of the fiscal year, so that when we get to the end of the year and we're doing this as part of the audit calculation, we, we won't have any issues this year. The second action plan relates to the timeliness and the accuracy of the financial statements. The second action plan relates to the timeliness and the accuracy of the financial statements. This was a little bit of a unusual year when we were going through the audit last year because the end of our fiscal year and the time that we work on the audit corresponded with the time that we were doing the PeopleSoft upgrade. And there were a couple of areas in the finance and accounting area, particularly around, not in paying people, but in moving payroll into the general ledger, that were very challenging. And we had a lot of work to get that right, coming through stabilization. That was one of the things that really held us up in terms of the timeliness of our financial statements, getting them to the auditors. And the other thing that it did is it took a lot of our resources. We're focused on that. And so, we had to kind of, at the spur of the moment, pull some people into roles and asking them to look at some things in terms of year-end work and audit work that they maybe hadn't been as fully trained for as they should have been. So, the good news is we've made significant improvement on the timely processing of the payroll to the ledger. We are about, back to where we need to be on that. We have streamlined the reconciliation and review process as part of the year-end close. We have identified entries that will require modifications as part of our cash to accrual at the end of the year and prioritize those entries. And we are trying to avoid any self-imposed bottlenecks by working on cross-training for the accounting staff. So that we have, for all of the audit entries and for all of the year-end activities we have gone through, and we have identified individuals who will be responsible, and they are currently working on their training to make sure if that's something new for them, they are very aware and have an opportunity to understand and practice what they need to be doing at the end of the year. This one is probably an area where we will always have opportunity. We have a very short, doesn't seem short, it's about two months, but it's very short when you're in the middle of it, window to get from the end of our fiscal year to our audited financial statements. What's different for this district than anyone else in the state is that in that same window, we also convert from cash books, which is the state requirement, to accrual books, which put us in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, which is appropriate and important for a district of this size. So, that takes a lot of extra work at the end of the year. So, when you think about the calendar that we have, we allow about a two-week timeline for getting our cash-based books completed. Then we have about a three-week window that we work on, the cash-to-accrual conversions, and we work on our government and business activity statements. Then we have the audit package to prepare, including the financial statements, the notes to the audit, as well as the management discussion and the audit presentation. And then we also want to get through in that time period before we submit the audit, certainly our internal reviews, reviews with the superintendent, as well as reviews with the Board of Education. So, it is always going to be a tight window for us. We will certainly continue to do everything we can to optimize it. And I would say that the one thing that we always do is communicate very closely with the state. So, we have filed our audit late, most years. This year, I believe we filed, it's due November 4th. I believe we filed on November 21st this year. So, we were a little later than we had been in the past couple of years because of some of these challenges that we had. But we work very closely with the state. We communicate upfront if we think we're going to have a challenge. So, there's never been a penalty to us from the state for the fact that we have been late because we do communicate. We let them know, we keep them apprised of our timeline. And if we have any updates to that, we're, we're in constant contact with them. And they're also in contact with Simon Johnson, our audit firm. The last corrective action plan that we have is related to the capital asset accounting. There it goes. This one is a, identified as a deficiency simply because of the complexity that's involved in it. There is a lot of manual activity that happens. There is, there are a lot of manual entries that happen. There is a lot of spreadsheet work to get this one done, and it is a lot of data. This is every capital asset we have, we have in the district. We are going through a deep review this year of all of those processes, as I talked about, assigning responsibilities, making sure that, that we have the timing right on the flow and the sequence of everything coming through the audit. Right now, the priority that we're working on, we do have a couple of items, again, coming out of the PeopleSoft upgrade that are creating some challenges for us in fixed assets. We are working those now that the payroll issues have largely been resolved. We are working those in combination with IMS and with Accenture, our internal, external third-party technical partner. So, we anticipate having those issues resolved within the next month, and then we'll be ready to proceed with year-end activities. So, those are the updates that I have on the corrective actions from the audits. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
With your corrective action plans, are you guys working hand-to-hand with Simon Johnson to make sure that you don't have a correction action plan that they don't think is actually going to fix the deficiency?
Yes, we actually laid these corrective action plans, the high-level plan itself, and what needed to happen was laid out and was actually part of the audit document itself with Simon Johnson. And we have since then been working the details. And we update, when we, you know, conferencing with them periodically, we update on where we're at.
Thank you. Colleagues, Mr. Pearlman?
Can you remind the board when the audit was submitted from OPS to the Nebraska Department of Education?
I believe it was on November 21st this year.
And when was it delivered to the school board?
The first meeting in December is when the, I believe, is when the board, it was the first meeting in December, I believe?
Right, it was, it was three weeks later, so 21 days later. Is that, is that pretty typical? I don't, you know, I've only been on the board a couple of years, but...
Is that typical? Typically happens in that timeframe that I remember. I'm just speaking from my experience, but...
My understanding is that has been the past practice, that usually the first or second meeting in December is when the audit has, has come to the board. We did review the audit. Simon Johnson and some of our accounting team did review the audit with President Snow before we actually submitted on the 21st.
Yes. Mrs. Gaudy?
I would like to see if maybe going forward, because it seems like at one point, and I could be wrong, we used to do it at the second meeting in November. But sometimes that conflicts with when Simon Johnson can do it as well, so I know that has an impact. But it'd be great if it could be presented to the Board of Education prior to submission to the state or within a short period of that time, if that's possible going forward, since it's done. But I know it also depends on their timing of presentations because they do other school districts as well.
A little, it does depend on how late we are, because it was actually due the 4th of November. So, you know, in order to, in order to review that fully with the board prior to, if we were to hit that date, we are literally working right up to that date.
Right, and I'm just thinking, in the, in that timeframe, maybe in the same month, that it gets submitted to the state, it'd be great if we could, but I know that part of that is timing. You've got to have it ready to go. I mean, they've got to be done with it, which may not happen until that middle of November or November 20th, and then the next available board meeting, if they're still in process, isn't until that first week in December. But if the, if the opportunity is there, I think it depends. This time, there were a lot of deficiencies and material, you know, misstatements and that sort of thing that I think precluded them from getting it done as soon as maybe they would have wanted with the PeopleSoft, which is kind of all messy. So, maybe there's that opportunity going forward, if, if it exists.
Mr. Pearlman?
And just to follow up on that, I guess from my perspective, I think we got it maybe the day before the meeting or four days before. And I know there was an opportunity to have a meeting, I think the Friday before the board meeting, but it's, it's really thick. And for people who aren't in like your business, it's really hard to understand. I mean, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars, hundreds of pages. And so, I, I just wanted more than four days to review all that so I could make heads or tails to avoid some of the criticism that passports have had for their stuff.
As I recall, we did offer opportunities for board members to come in to review. And I believe there were multiple opportunities. It wasn't just one opportunity for board members to come in. Several did come in to review the audit. I know you weren't unavailable to come prior, Mr. Pearlman, but that, those opportunities were, were offered to our board members as we would continue to do. One of the things that I did ask Mrs. Byrd and her team to do was to provide you with these updates because we had the material weakness. And I wanted to make sure that we were not just, you know, checking and saying, you know, we're moving along, but that we could actually present that information to you quarterly moving forward. So, this is the first update that the board will have on the corrective action plan, and then there will be one quarterly moving forward to assure not just the board, but also our taxpayers, that we are making sure that we are taking care of the resources that we have.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
And we'll make sure, one of the things, just what I've gathered is after the board presentation and the small group sessions, is to work closely with them to make sure that we explain, I know it's really hard when you're dealing with accounting to explain it more on a everyday person level, because many of the people that are watching, no matter what was said, still probably wouldn't understand what was presented in the meeting or even in those small groups that did have some colleagues say that it was a little difficult. So, really working to make sure that the board, the entire board has enough time to kind of review that, understand it. And when the presentation comes up in December or November, whenever that date comes, is really having it very simple so everyone in the community can understand it. And the board will be comprised of everything that will be presented as well.
That makes sense. I appreciate that feedback.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Byrd. Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much, and I do believe you're going to switch to your other hat.
I am. I am now going to switch to my budget hat. I'd like to give you a brief update on the recent activities we have had regarding the completion and development of the 2019-2020 budget. So, a quick update on where we have and things that we have completed and things that are still open. Several elements of the budget process have been completed, while there are several other important elements that still remain open. So, things that have been completed, school staffing conferences have been completed. So, that gives us a view into the staffing levels at each school. Central office discretionary budgets have been completed. And off-formula allocations, which take charges such as textbook replacement and allocate those out to the schools or costs related to maintenance or other things that get allocated out to the schools, those off-formula allocations have been updated for the year and completed. Open items, which are significant, include revenue, as you heard from Mr. Lindsay's update. The legislature has moved out the target for state aid from March 1st to June 10th. So, that is their new commitment date for providing a state aid number. We don't know at this point if we will have it earlier than that, but that is their new commitment date that they have for state aid. Once that is completed, we will also need that to roll through to get the actual TOSA calculation and get our numbers, our certified state aid, which will come to us from NDE. Salary negotiations have not been finalized, so that is still a major open item in our budget process. And we do not know what the annual retirement contribution or the ARC will be. We do not know what that will be for this fiscal year that we are in. We do not know what the final number will be. We have a budgeted number. We do not know what the final number will be, and we do not know what a forecasted number for next year's budget will be. We anticipate receiving that May 1st at this point. Assumptions that are included in the budget, these have not changed from the prior update to the board. So, we are still targeting an unassigned fund balance at 17% or greater. This ensures that we have an appropriate level of reserve funds within the district. Our range is from 10% to 20%, and we want to be in the upper, upper portion of that range to ensure that we have flexibility should we need it. Items that are built into the budget at this point, so Dr. Logan discussed the funding for the important elementary textbook adoption that is built into the budget. We have the costs associated with the startup and opening of Gifford Park School located, has been loaded into the budget. The new transportation contract and the increase in that has been loaded into the budget. And we have, we are getting back on track with planned obsolescence in this budget. So, that are the rolling technology updates. This one will be focused on elementary technology, so that'll be a great benefit to our students. When we last talked about the budget, we had identified a potential shortfall in the budget of approximately $10 million. To date, we are, we are working on the solves for that, for that shortfall, and our current estimate is that we have identified $8.4 million of savings against that $10 million target. We are still looking in the same buckets that we had originally identified, which were contract services, equity adjustment, program efficiencies, redundancy and efficiency, primarily at central office, and supplies. And that number changes a little bit each day because we're continuing to work that, but right now, we believe we're at $8.4 million. So, we will continue to work toward the $10 million objective there. The timeline, the only real change to the timeline from what you have seen previously is obviously Phase 4. We have moved that out to the end of June because if we don't know revenue until after June 10th, that has had to move back a little bit. That is really the only change to the timeline at this point. So, we keep working all of the other components so that we are ready to finish up the budget work when we know what our revenue looks like. That is the end of my update. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Do you have, and I wouldn't say an update, what's the process, and this is probably more for Dr. Logan, on how do we, once we move through, if you go to Slide 5, the final review for that target, will there be like a community meeting or like a workshop or something for the community to come and attend so they can see the things that the district is taking the steps to make this adjustment?
We certainly can have a board workshop. I think that would be my recommendation to have a board workshop where we would present the budget to the community for their, for their review. Likely, probably will have to do it in July because of when we can't, typically we could do it in June, but we can't because we won't have our value, our final information from the state until June, and then the budget adoption would be in September. We can actually, we could do it twice. That's probably, that's usually recommended, that it's done more than once. And that would be my recommendation to do it. Have two opportunities, so perhaps once in July, once we have the finalized budget, and then probably in our first meeting in August, where we would be close to where school's starting. So, we would have most people back in town by that time.
Thank you. And I do believe we have one meeting in July, which is the 15th, so probably adding that workshop into that board meeting so we're all, don't have to do another meeting. Questions from... Questions from the board? Well, thank you so much, Mrs. Byrd. We appreciate you. And how long have you been with OPS so far? Oh, my goodness. Well, it feels like you've been here for years. Thank you so much for what you do.
He feels that way, too.
Moving on to J2D, Phase One and Phase Two Bond Program Update. Mr. Cozart, and he will be presenting.
So good evening, Board President Snow, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Logan, and members of viewing public. Again, I'm Charles Cozart, and I understand I'm the only thing between us calling it a night, so I would move forward through my presentation and then address your-
That's not true. We do have closed session, so.
-might getting out of here and then address your questions as they might come up. Okay, so the bottom line of front, on this slide here is important to note, this is a wrap-up for our 2014 status. We are currently at about 98% complete out of 83 active projects that have spent a period of five years. It's significant to note that we've had zero, I say again, zero student or staff safety incidents over this five-year periods, there, this five-year period, there have been a total of three contractor-related safety incidents, but again, that is well below the industry norm. We have one project at this point that remains within the bid award stage, and that is for Kellam Elementary. When we meet in latter May, that packet will be brought before the board for approval. And after that approval, construction should be completed at Kellam Elementary in order for the school to open that fall of 2019. For 29, for the Phase Two 2018 program, it has a market value of $409 million. It consists of only 25 projects, but like the Phase One program, which has over 80 programs or projects in it, it would significantly help relieve some of the burden of overcrowdness that exists within the district. Again, 52% of that program is currently within the design phase. Construction within the Phase Two program will be completed during the '22 through 2024 timeframe. I will read through all the numbers that are listed right there on the board in front of you. Going on to the next slide, a significant aspect of both programs being the Phase One 2014 and the Phase Two 2018 bond programs has been that of economic inclusion. This program has allowed opportunities for both small emerging businesses to participate in our procurement processes as well as provide students exposure to STEM and STEAM-related opportunities that exist within the architecture, construction, engineering, and other industries. Our goals that were set by the District Board of Education for the 2014 bond was 7%. That was the aspiration of goals that would have put about $29 million into the community. The success of that program, the 2014 bond, which equated to over $40 million or 11.4% led to the board approving and changing the goals for the 2018 bond to 15%. The success of the 2018 bond should result to a over $60 million economic impact to the state of Nebraska. As the superintendent briefly made mention of earlier in the, this evening's meeting, I was likewise tasked to come up with some key performance, we were tasked to come up with some key performance indicators for the Phase Two bond program. You have listed on the board here about seven different KPIs, as they're referred to, that will assist decision-makers in making a quick assessment on how the program is performing and likewise provide an opportunity to, you know, provide feedback on where we might want to make, make adjustments. So the next couple of slides that just give you, provide a sample snapshot of, based on those particular KPIs, and it'll be a different KPI for each of the six buckets that are located there, they're color-coded. For example, if it's green, it'll, you know, reflect the status of funding, I mean, yeah, the cost of the program, or red would be things that relate in the category of risks. And along with these KPIs and the various buckets, that I have a measurement or matrix that will assess if they're in a red, green, or amber type status. So the part two, part two of what has to be done now by myself and Building and Grounds and Jacobs has come up with this measurement, this matrix for how we will determine what's the red, green, or amber status of the KPIs that you saw on the previous page. This next slide here, it's just a better depiction of one of the six slides, one of the six snapshots that you saw earlier. This one here is on, for example, the capital budget. If we're performing in the green, if we're behind or over budget, in which case we'll be in either an amber or red status. And I'll conclude my presentation by saying that anyone in the general public has the opportunity, go to www.bond OPS.org, they can hit on that, take them out to the, the bond web page, and there's a drop-down box where you can pull down and look at information regarding the scope of work or the status of any project that's supportive of either the Phase One or the Phase Two bond. Thank you, and what are your questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cozart. The breakdown on the economic inclusion slide is, I appreciate it that you broke down tier one and tier two on there, and looking forward for that goal of 15%. Hopefully, the district gets more, but I'll be happy whatever you guys provide because it is an asset to the community. So questions for KPI, just for the community, and maybe just for myself, actually, can you explain a little bit more on like the target date that you guys are going to launch this and have this 100% ready to go, and will this be available for everybody?
So upon completion, the KPIs and the scoreboard will be available to report and update our next quarterly bond updates on a quarterly basis or when required. You asked, when will it be ready to go? Again, it's an ongoing process, certainly by the next bond update, I'll be able to roll out, you know, the status of how it's working.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I believe it's Chicago Public Schools is the sample that you guys are using on here.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's very exciting from this point, so thank you, colleagues. If you guys have any questions, comments, or concerns, Dr. Logan?
I just want to thank Mr. Cozart and also Mr. Summer for working alongside, now, Mr. Cozart. We had, as a result of the feedback that I got upon onboarding, felt it was important that we have a key individual from the district to work alongside Jacobs to address any of the concerns from board members and also as an assurance to the public around how we're, how we're doing from the district's perspective as well as our fantastic partner in Jacobs and Mr. Mark Summer as their representative. So I just want to thank you and also want to thank Mark Summer for participating, especially in developing those key, those key performance indicators that are nice, simplistic, and really kind of encapsulate just where we are very quickly for our board members and for the general public. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There are, there are no, I see reports. Dr. Holman?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, legal counsel, and Dr. Turnquist, negotiations, real estate, personnel, and legal advice.
There's a motion to go into closed session by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ryan. Roll call, please. Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Coleman?
Seven up. Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, legal counsel, and Dr. Turnquist. Negotiations, real estate, personnel, and legal advice. Let the record reflect the board in the closed session at 8:25. Closed session begins at 8:30. Dr. Logan?
All right.[1236.65]
All right.
Left the record reflect, the board came out of closed session at 9:14, meetings adjourned, 9:14.